Every day in BDP is, we are still going to continue our fight in Edo State. So we have so much to gain having the lower power as the governor of Edo State. On that note, ladies and gentlemen, can we just stand up with our vision to, as I welcome on stage, the next governor of Edo State, I call him Ee Koma, Oludie! That is incoming governor Olumide Ousakono Akwata. Please sit down, please sit down, what have I said? Thank you all for giving me if I lapse into the language now again. I recognise that not all of us are Bini speaking, but a lot of us are from Edo State. Many are from Delta who are here in Solidarity. In fact, one told me today and I agree with him that he believes that I will be a Bendel governor. And how can I, how can I not be a Bendel governor? I grew up in Bendel. And if they can revert to the old national anthem, who says they cannot revert to Bendel? So we keep our fingers crossed. I greet all of you, I say a good evening to everyone here. I must firstly apologise to everyone present and I hope those who have left, those here of us here who may be able to reach them, to apologise for starting so late, so far behind shadow. I'm really sorry. Maybe sometimes we are too ambitious and we try to do too much. We arrived London yesterday and tried to, we pulled off what was a very, very impressive outing yesterday in London. And we thought that we had the same, our energy levels will be sustained. And we just hit the road this morning and what man proposes? Exactly, so we now found out that it was just initial background. Say, but you know, be rude. And a couple of things held us back. But please, I don't want you to sign post or I don't want you to think that this is the kind of government we will run. We will not, we will not be on African convenient time. You know, in Africa, there's GMT, there's DST, but there's now ACT. 2pm ACT, this is what we done once, 2pm African convenient time. Anytime you feel this, they just show. I want to give you my word. Even though my example that I have shown today might not bear me out, but I give you my assurance. We will not do things like this. So kindly forgive us for keeping you waiting. It is not out of disrespect, we just couldn't help ourselves. And we'll try and make sure that that doesn't happen again. Thank you so much. So I apologise and I say, I hope the apology is accepted. I want to thank everybody who is still here. All of you who are, some have come from outside of Manchester. Mr Obasoke is here from Kampu. Some are from London, some are here from Manchester. We try and make this quick so that those who need to go, need to go. Or can't go, but please be with us. We are here because we think it's important for us to reach out to our Ki Hakim in the diaspora. To say to you that please do not stand aside as unlocusts in the contest that is before us. Please take more than a passing interest in the goings on in Edo State. If you are from Edo, please reach out to your people at home and let them be, take more than a passing interest in the elections. If you are not from Edo, you have within your sphere of influence Edo people who are voters, who you can reach out to. It's very important because where we are now is a really, really, very precarious situation that we are confronted with. This which is why it's important for us, we came out yesterday, we've done, we did a meeting in London. We're here in Manchester today, we're in Rome tomorrow evening, we're in Antwerp on a Tuesday, I believe. At some point later, next month, we are going to the States to reach our people. Some of my friends called me, they said, "Olusha, I can't be here this one. What because I, London, we do elections." We know you to be a bit more considered. Why you be doing this kind here? I said, "No, no, no, you get why. You see that bit, they run for afternoon like that. And something they pursue, maybe they pursue something." So, so most people don't know how influential our diaspora community have become. We're working on this, we're working on it. It's on the way to America, it's either on our way out or on our way back. I have to come to Berlin, that's the city of my birth. I was born there, so I have to be, I have to go back to Berlin. I was telling my cousin, I said, "It's been a while now." So I have to come and see our people. And I've been missing Black Forest and Pop Forest anyway, so. So, but I was saying that people don't recognise how influential our diaspora community have become. And for good reason. And it's important that we work within diaspora community to move the needle, to get our people to understand that this matter is in our hands. And if I may not be able to influence them, Ie, 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 no re, iyo koryomo, our mama at home. Her son in Stuttgart may be able to explain it better to her. Her daughter, her daughter in Philadelphia may be able to explain it better to her. And it's just, it's a reality. Those closest to you are in a better position to get your attention. So we have to come. And those of you, many of you may have participated in online webinars and online conversations that I have had across platforms. So it's not as if we're just rushing to get on the plate. We have been engaging with our diaspora community for months. But we thought, okay, we can spare this one week, let's come and see that all our people here to let them understand the situation that we are in. Before I proceed, let me especially recognise, even though you have held the microphone already, Prince of Benamorion, who is here with us, my brother. And sitting next to him is Mr Foster, Okeiraki, who is my brother. And also my colleague, my learned colleague, a lawyer who practices in Germany. I mentioned them specifically because both gentlemen were aspirants just like myself when we were running for the ticket of the Labour Party. And, and they both, they both decided to step down on their own ambition, on their respective pursuits and to support me. And I want to place my record, I had support. I want to place my record that that support has endured all the way till today. I'm not the easiest person to deal with. I tend to want to do things my own way, like, what is the name of one singer? Frank Sinatra. So, so sometimes it's difficult to explain that, you know? I lost my mother when I was 21, 20, 32 years. And, you know, they go, it just become, okay, okay, sir. Crisis, crisis, same journey, here we are. 32 years have been on my own essentially. You know, doing my own thing, trying to, you know, find my way for 32 years. And so when you're, when you're that way, it's very difficult to learn new things. You're always taking your own steps. And so what I find is that Prince of Benamorion and Mr Okeiraki have had to be explaining on my behalf to many who don't understand that it doesn't mean any harm or say, "I, he's okay, he's an okay guy." Because how many folks can I pick up, how many people can I call and explain that? So I'm very grateful to the both of you for standing in the gap. Time will eventually tell and I'm sure that our colleagues will know that I mean well. It's not easy to teach an old dog new tricks, but we'll keep on running. And so I just wanted you to please applaud them again because they're the best. I am Olumide Ousakono Akwata and I'm the Labour Party candidate for the Edo State group by the July elections coming up by the 21st of September 2024. And seated behind me is Alhaji Yusuf Asama Kadiri, senior advocate of Nigeria, who is the deputy governor candidate. And we have both come to present ourselves to our Ki Hakim, Edo indigis in the diaspora and friends and well-wishers of Edo State to say that we are in thank goodness. He's the chief of the Secretariat Kingdom, he's the prince of the Secretariat Kingdom. Is that Jacob of you? Hey Jacob, how you doing? Good to see you. And Jacob used to work in my firm, Templess, in Lagos. They had a work together. And he sent me a message and he said that, Jacob said, "He's my, he's my professional son." And he's from Craftewa and we work very closely together in the firm, but he lives here now in Endang. Good to see you, good to see you. I brought you here too. Welcome, welcome. I'll come around and take a picture. Thank you. It's part of a very expanding, very expansive, sorry, Templess Atlanta. Thank you. And he's a prince of the Auchi Kingdom. Both of us have combined between us 61 years of legal experience, right? And we're both proud products of the University of Benin. Great Unibank. Great Unibank. Greatest of the greatest of the greatest. I don't know what is the word, you know, sir? It does go for your party, for party that time now, so why you say that? I always say they come to you for Ekoboma anyway. We will speak to the issue of Ekoboma, what has become of our school, our economic sphere. You know, and so we present a formidable team. But beyond that, we are outsiders. As Prince of Benamorion has said, or was it our emcee, "I have no godfather. Neither does he. There are no strings attached to us, no bodies, who the strings were behind. Without coat-rope since, not be today, not coat-rope since, you will not agree for any party." So in fact, when I was president of the Nigerian Bar Association, that was the same problem. They didn't want me to be president, I had not caught rope since, "God is my father." End of story. All ideas are welcome, put the ideas on the table, they will be stress test, they will be stress tested. And then the best idea will prevail. So we have come to present ourselves because this is a, this is a watershed moment for Edo State. This is a watershed moment for Nigeria. Edo State is the heartbeat of Nigeria. Once we can get it right to Edo, Nigeria is on the cause for self-correction or cause correction. I think it's important that we take an interest in this election. I think it's important that we speak to our people at home and let them do the right thing because it is in the hands of the people for this, for us to turn the tide. 25 years, two political parties have been running the affairs of Nigeria and Edo State. PDP and ABC, 25 years. Every picky one goes to school must come back with a report card, not be soon. What do they have to show for it? People say, "I'm always bashing them." I say, "Before I come, there must be a reference point. I speak to you about issues that we will do in governance as against what they have not done." So it's not about, people say, "Oh, although make it an issues-based campaign." You know, you know, many professors do this politics when we go, they say, "Make it an issues-based campaign." I say, "Is it not an issue that education is in such bad shape in Edo State? Is it not an issue that we cannot boast of good roads in Edo State? Is it not an issue that healthcare remains a challenge?" So what do you mean, issues-based campaign? If you do, if you have done well, even, even the mountains will sing your praise. They're not, they tell deaf and dumb, say market not close. Now I, they just say, "Yeah." It is clear that government in Edo has been suboptimal, below par. 25 years, if you check their report card, now electricity, now road, healthcare, now food, Gary is 90,000 naira a bag right now in Nigeria. Now, what, I mean, any index of human development, check and see, they have been, they performed poorly. On the other hand, Labour Party, if you look in our logo, you will see Papa, Mama, Pickin'. Because for us, we are people-centric, people-focused, our programmes are people-impacting. 25 years, they have nothing to show. Meanwhile, Edo earns 16 billion naira a month. Edo is owing about 600 billion. Like I said yesterday, to say, "I feel see what they use the money do, it, they will not pay me." But I don't use torchlight, go round. I can't see, there's nothing, there's nothing, there is, there's nothing to show, you know? Then, if you resume your seat, microphone will reach your hand just now, so now you ready, you're not telling me to talk. So, there's nothing to show. Meanwhile, in Abia State, which is almost become non-existent, has been resuscitated in just one year. Because everybody, any idiot would know that that market, the economy of that city and state is dependent on the market. And Alex Otte, our governor, has resuscitated the market. He's, right now, he brought out a billion naira from Abia State coffers, offered it to market women traders artisans to come and take loans, interest-free. Interest-free. Because they recognise that our banking system is not small business-friendly. So the state government has to step into, step in the gap to help our people. People, people, because it's about the people. I said yesterday that the classic definition of democracy has people mentioned three times. It is not coincidence, it is not accident. Because democracy and governance is about people. They are supposed to be the beneficiaries of government policy and programmes. But what we have in Nigeria is that it is anything but for the people. It is for those of them who are in government, for their families and their friends. That is the wrong government, that's had the wrong government. But it is in our hands to change. This election cycle presents us with yet another opportunity to turn the tide. Our PVC in our hands is the power we have. Those of us who are in the diaspora who cannot vote, and by the way, you have my commitment that as governor, we will work hard to ensure that diaspora voting is put in our constitution. So that our people can express their will even from thousands of miles away from home. For those who can vote, who are within you or under your influence, please reach out to them. Because as we have said, the difference is clear, now settle up. The difference is clear. 25 years of nothingness, 25 years of retrogression. Indeed, we not say these two parties, they are essentially the same. You know, PDP, APC, two sides of a very bad coin. That is what, that's what, they, you know? The PDP go pass the ball to APC, APC go trap, turn around like this, turn around like this, pass out to PDP again, PDP go head and now. And you know, say, "Now we be the ballo." The people are the, now we, they use to play ball. And like I said to another audience, I said, "Now every monkey post, now it not be better ball." Now monkey post, they use to play, not be standard pitch. But never again, people have said to ourselves, never again, we allow ourselves to be so traumatised by a group of people who we give power. So that is why we are here, because if we don't do something about it now, we are at a very precarious point. We might get to the point of no turn. Sometimes I have a very depressing feeling that we are probably there, but we have to keep on trying. We have to keep on trying, Gary is 19,000. So there is, apart from irregular inflation, there is food inflation in Nigeria. The average man cannot eat, hunger has become our reality in Nigeria. And it's a failure of governance. Our agricultural sector is not, is underperforming because in Edo State, for example, government is not working with the farmers. There's no security for them. There's no fertiliser, no pesticide, no farming implement, no soft loans to be able to get their soil, work, to work the soil. Our plan in Labour Party is to work with farmers and ensure that government is an off-taker. So when they produce government buys, when they produce government buys, and government does two things, one of two things, set up production facility with private sector operators and you store and you sell, like I produce bonds of those days, or you set up agro-alike processing industries around your farm settlements. So who, the guy who comes, who makes, who plants tomatoes, you bring, you make tomato puree, and the pineapple farmer, you make pineapple juice and so on and so forth. In that way, you feed yourselves, one, two, you improve the budget or the economy of the farmer. Three, you produce, you have jobs, jobs, which is most critical. I see my friend, Dr Oretanoko, he is, he lives here in Manchester, but he has a, he's a huge, he's involved in agriculture. Who have been friends since we were kids. And one day he called me, he said, "Something they distill." I said, "Hey." He said, "Listen to me, what you, I don't see, what agriculture can do." He's my brother, he called me, he said, "What agriculture can do?" He said, "If you feel be, if you get this governor, look into this." Our, our governments are sleeping on such a, such a potential for, for turning around the lives of our people. Healthcare, again, he's a medical doctor, so I can speak, he can speak to both issues. Healthcare. We have 192 wards in Edo State. It is our intention to put the primary healthcare centre in every of those wards. Health is a human right. My friends who are close to me know what I have been through in my life as far as health challenges is concerned. I am standing before you today because I had access to jurisdictions that take their people seriously and they give you healthcare, they give you health insurance. My friends are here, they know. And my life today because of a system that works. I said, "It was set up in Nigeria system," I assure you. So those who are in Nigeria is luck of the Russian roulette, Kalu Kango. If it be, if it not be, now God have with you. Ultimately, now God have with you. But God don't put some things in our hands. So I believe that every Edo indigin should be, should be able to access that kind of quality of healthcare. And a lot of our ailments, you can find them at the primary healthcare level. So let's deal with that, let us work on primary healthcare. And then of course, look at our hospitals, the secondary, and then ultimately the tertiary institutions. You can be sure that we are going to do that. The current government pulled down a hospital to build a museum. They knocked down a hospital to build a museum. Total misplacement of priorities. He just tell you where their mind be for the matter. Because I've gone around and I have seen that our healthcare situation in Edo is atrocious and is unacceptable to Labour Party. And we're going to change that. I can speak sector to sector, but I know that time will not permit. Roads in Edo State, you see signboards that say, "Please bear with us, this is a federal road." In Edo State, we will not make excuses when it comes to roads. We will fix roads, local, local government or whether there's any local government road to state or federal, we will repair them. The people must move, they can't move if the roads are not good. I have traversed 18 local governments, deputy governor candidate myself. I did that three times when I was running for the ticket of the party. I've done it once already as candidate, we're going to go two more times. We have seen a very close quarters, the reality in Edo State. I will share, and those of you who leave your numbers, I've sent you our documentary of our first tour. Igobazua has been a local government headquarters, headquarters for as long as I can remember. I was born to meet it, that's what I said. There is no government presence, they don't even have a bank. No government institution in Igobazua. Abu Dhu, Abu Dhu. We don't hear Abu Dhu since we will be smoking. No electricity for 10 years. Uroni Be, no electricity for 10 years. In Gara, largest local government in Nigeria, same local government since 1963, when it was created, has not been subdivided, same landlords. One government hospital, one doctor in the whole of Gara. And you will think that Edo Central is very better. You know, when we, it's an agenda, it's an, development knows no tribe. Development knows no tribe. Esa Central has produced three federal ministers of works, who roaming intercity roads in bad shape. So we are here to change that narrative. Because we are here for the people. We are here to ensure that we will fix the roads. Peter Obe did it in Anambra, Alex Otte is doing it in Abia. We can do it in Edo. While we are out here is to say, there is a clear cut difference between the status quo and what can be. It just needs the people to take the skill, not to get too despondent because there's a lot to cause or bring about despondency. But for them to believe again, it's only 60, under 60 days, 54 of 55 days to the elections. We can get our people to come out because it's the people that will propel us into government house. Get our people to come out and vote. And we will also stand and ensure that the votes are protected. The vote will be counted and the vote will be made to count. The people too must stay back. We must make sure that we wait until the final tally and when the results are announced. So that the mistakes of the past, we don't, we don't make them again. Ugbena Mewomodia, her own out. Translation, stone when they see for far, now they blind person act. So we see their path one, they catch you mugu once, it not bad. Now second mugu, now it be the problem. So as they don't do one before, we not go let them do one again. They try for Abia, it not work. Abia, the votes were counted and Alex Otte was declared governor. The votes will be counted in the elections in Edo State and Labour Party will be very victorious. I have a lot more to talk about, but I recognise that time is not our friend, people want to catch trains. Again, please accept our apology, we didn't get the timing right today. We will do better next time, but I thank all of you who have come out. People talk to people that people understand. You have people in Edo, you have your class, your secondary school platforms, you have your university platforms, you have your diaspora communities where Edo people are part of, are involved. Many are sitting on the fence, many are confused, many have been serially betrayed. Their trust, serially betrayed, so they have become reluctant participants in the process. We must try very hard to bring them back into the free. Because not to do otherwise is to give up. And that is not our passion. We must not give up, we must move on. And thank you very much, I will yield now to Manchester City. And I wish you all, even if you go by. . Thank you very much. But before we, we go into the Q and A, I just want to pass it back to the incoming deputy governor of Edo State.